Heather, do you want to turn the?
Catherine, it's you and me.
All motions standing.
No. Take turns.
Where are you? Is stuff on?
It's on, so he's good there. Molly should be here in three minutes.
I have to call this meeting in order. Roll call please, Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Ayers.
Mrs. Bachman. Mrs. Haskins.
Here.
Mrs. Kamischer.
Here.
Mrs. Kunkel.
Here.
Mrs. Rivera. Dr. Wugley.
Here. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation, under thy and to the visible and the breathing justice ground.
Are there any questions regarding this evening's agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
I have Ms. Haskins, second I have Ms. Kunkel. To approve the agenda as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Before I start with the vision statement, as you all know, today is Patriot Day, and I just have a little thing I would like to say. On this solemn day of September 11th, we pause to remember and honor the lives lost, the heroes who emerged, and the resilience of a nation. May their memory continue to inspire unity, compassion, and unwavering commitment to peace and freedom. Moreover, let us reaffirm our commitment to building a more inclusive and compassionate society we will never forget. Please just take a couple moments of silence, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Vision statement: It is the vision of the Pleasant Valley Community School District to provide the finest academic and extracurricular programs in the state. Not in some things, but in all things. Not for some students, but for all students. Welcome to our guests this evening. If you would like to address the board on a non-agenda item, now would be your opportunity to do so. Please come up to the podium, state your name and your capacity within the district, and then you will get three minutes in order to address the board. Because it is a non-agenda item, we will not be able to respond, but we are listening, and you will be given three minutes. I would hope that you please refrain from naming any names because we'd like to keep things confidential if possible. Is anybody who would like to address support on a non-agenda item? Seeing none, or members? Ms. Kunkel.
I just wanted to say my thoughts and words are with the Moritz family and friends during this difficult time.
Ms. Haskins.
Thanks.
I have nothing.
Try it. Ms. Kenyon.
I have nothing.
Mr. Stevens.
Yes, the personnel agenda in your packet has been updated.
Mr. Struce.
Two things. First of all, as we look at your consent agenda tonight, we are glad to announce and first of all really thank Liz Moritz. She has submitted her letter of retirement at the end of this year. Liz has been in education for 38 years. Of those 38 years, 24 have been in science at the high school of Pleasant Valley. So very proud of her and her career with Pleasant Valley. Had a chance to visit with her earlier this week, or last week I should say, and congratulate her on every day being a last day when you look at this part of her career now. So she's excited there. Just want to echo what Director Kunkel has stated. On behalf of the district, our deepest sympathies to the Moritz family and the passing of their daughter Jane, who was a junior at Pleasant Valley High School last evening. We ask everybody to keep the family and your thoughts and prayers at this time during this difficult time. So thank you, Dr. Kunkel, for bringing that up as well. One other one. Also retiring or resigning after 28 years of coaching tennis for us is Eric Crawford. He was an assistant head coach for us for several years, so 28 years. So, thank you. That's all I have tonight.
Mr. Kamischer, do you have anything? Mr. Kamischer?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Okay, thanks. All right. Are there any questions on this evening's consent agenda? If not, I will take a motion.
I move the board to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
I have Ms. Kunkel, second I have Ms. Haskins to approve this evening's consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, we will do approval of bills.
I move the general fund warrants to be issued in a total amount of $498,314.65 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Kunkel, second I have Ms. Haskins that the general fund warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Nutrition Fund.
I move that nutrition fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $70,556.27 in payment of invoices presented. Second.
Motion, Ms. Haskins, second I have Ms. Kunkel that the nutrition fund warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Elementary, Junior, High Activity Fund.
I move the elementary, junior, high activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $1,680.68 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Kunkel, second I have Ms. Haskins that the elementary, junior, high activity fund warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
High School Activity Fund.
I move that high school activity fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $51,884.96 in payment of invoices presented. Second.
Motion, Ms. Haskins, second I have Ms. Kunkel that the high school activity fund warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Management Fund.
I move the management fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $12,270.68 in payment of invoices presented.
Motion, Ms. Kunkel, second I have Ms. Haskins that the management fund warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. All in favor say aye.
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 Capital Projects Fund.
I move that capital project fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $843,697.17 in payment of invoices presented. Second.
Motion, Ms. Haskins, second I have Ms. Kunkel that the capital project fund warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Aye.
Physical, Plant and Equipment, or PAPL funds.
I move PAPL fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $320,915.51 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Kunkel, second I have Ms. Haskins that the PAPL fund warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Internal Service Fund.
I move that internal service fund warrant $65.47 to $65.50 be issued in the total amount of $12,611.42 in payment of invoices presented. Second.
Motion, Ms. Haskins, second I have Ms. Kunkel that the internal service fund warrants $65.47 to $65.50 be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Trust Fund.
I move the trust fund warrants be issued in the total amount of $685.10 in payment of invoices presented.
Second.
Motion, Ms. Kunkel, second I have Ms. Haskins that the trust fund warrants be issued and the payment of invoices presented. Are there any questions? All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Okay, moving on. We have no old business, so we're going to move on to new business. English Language Learners ELL Instructional Team. Ms. Kenyon and Mr. Humm.
So, you know what? I'm going to let Mr. Humm and his team go ahead and introduce themselves and talk to you a little bit tonight about the English Language Learners at Pleasant Valley. And they, I don't need to say anything else because they will do a fabulous job, and they have some great information to share with everyone in regards to our programming for our students.
First, I'd like to introduce the team members we have with us tonight. We have both Ms. Brittany Andrews and Ms. Carolyn Blake. Brittany works with the elementary level students. Carolyn works out at the junior high as well as with Cody and Bridgeview students. So, and I think in presenting this information, I'd like to thank the board for the years of support that we've had for the growth and the building of this program. If I reach back to where this all started, and I can look at Mr. Struce because we did a lot of this together, as well as with Ms. Minkie, what have you. We started with a small group of students doing some after-school programs and realized we needed to create and build a real program and a plan. Since then, we've done that. We now have four and a half teachers, and we're covering all of our buildings, and we're providing wonderful services for the students that have, are learning multiple languages and coming to our buildings in need of assistance with English. So I'd like to walk you through some of the history of our program and where we're at now and where we're going. Again, here is our team. You see Brittany and Carolyn are with us today, but also Victoria Trossell, Raven Duke, and Emily Connell. Our mission and our motto. We are, from our inception by student by need, we're looking at how can we best serve the student with whatever their situation is, whatever their family situation is, to bring them into Spartan, our Spartan community and help them attend to language needs and find success in our buildings. Our program has been, as a formal program, has been in existence for 13 years. And again, it evolved from some after-school tutoring to formalizing and building a program to what we have in front of you today. Current program this year, we are starting the year after the screenings we've completed with 130 students. We are monitoring 107 students, and that represents 33 different languages from around the world that have come into our Spartan community. Just to give you a little history in terms of numbers. If we go back just before COVID, we started the year with 99 students and then ended the year with 106. As you look at those numbers, probably an interesting fact is that we always end the year with more students than we start with. This program is an ebb and flow of people moving in and out of the district. And as you can see, last year, we had a substantial number of students move in. If we're looking at the projections, starting roughly where we started last year, one student more, I would project probably by the end of the year that 160, 170 range is probably where we'll be at. So how does the program work? When families fill out the online registration, there is a home language survey that is embedded within that. If they answer one of the three questions with a language other than English, then according to the Office of Civil Rights, we then screen them for need for assistance in English, should they have it. The vehicle we use to screen students is the ALPA-21 Proficiency Language Assessment. This is the screener. A longer version of this same test becomes the summative that we use in the spring. Again, per the Office of Civil Rights in our state, we have one exam that gets students into the program. It's the same four-language domain exam in a longer format that's used to exit them. This is our language levels, if you will. We have students who either show proficient, meaning they don't need ESL services, progressing, meaning they have some English but need some supports that our teachers and our programs can provide. Emerging would be our students who are coming in. We would call them newcomers or people who have minimal English. A little bit about these levels. Progressing means a person could probably have a good basic conversation with you or with their peers, but when it comes to the academic language piece, they would be struggling, like to read academic texts, to read at grade level, what have you. A student who is emerging would probably struggle with that basic conversation. These are students that we start at the ground level, giving them anchor words, working through how do we make them comfortable as human beings in the building as they're struggling to work with a language that is not anything that they understand or that they have minimal experience with. This gives you a little background. The item at the bottom, after a student is screened, they are given a score in the four language domains of reading, writing, listening, and speaking. That's what those numbers represent. And again, a student with twos and ones, if there are three ones and a two, they're emerging. If you see a bunch of threes, or at least one three, then they're in that progressing level. If a student tests with a high of a five, which is a proficient level, and maybe a couple of fours and no threes, they are deemed proficient. So once the screening takes place, parents are informed of the student's proficiency level. We communicate with the families, saying, "We've screened your child. Your child is either proficient and does not need extra support, or your child could benefit from some supports from our services." The parents then have an opportunity to accept those services, accept part of the services. Let's say, for example, they don't want their child working with an ESL teacher pulled from the classroom, but they are okay with push-in, or they are okay using a supplemental software program. That's a choice, and we do have some parents, probably more at the secondary level, that choose to waive because of scheduling or a whole host of reasons. All right, so current service models. What do we mean by what we do is? And I'm going to invite both Carolyn and Brittany to come up and share what they do because this is at the meat and the heart of our program and how it works.
Hey, everyone. Just a little bit about some of our models. As Jamie said, we are by student by need. So some students have like a combination of all four of these, right? There's no one model that works with one student. And that also changes throughout the year. We might start the beginning of the year with one model, and then eventually, as their proficiency grows, we're going to modify that model as well. So I'll just go over the first one. Pull-out is probably historically the most common way ESL is used in a lot of districts, which is where the student is pulled out of their regular classroom for 20, 30 minutes a day in some districts. Ours is generally two to three times a week. And that's where we provide focused, individualized instruction with that student or a small group of students. We use that in combination for a lot of newcomers. A lot of newcomers need basic instructional-focused lessons, and so that's a way for us to pull them out of the classroom, work with them specifically on those skills, and then bring them back to the classroom. Push-in is sometimes combined a little bit with co-teaching. They're very different. Push-in is where the ESL teacher will be more collaborative with the classroom teacher. Will go into the classroom during certain content area times to work with the student on a one-on-one basis, or a small group of students in that classroom. Co-teaching is where we're trying to push a little bit more. Co-teaching is the preferred method for working with students who speak multiple languages. But we need, you know, a lot more individuals to do full, co-teaching full-time. But we're kind of starting to do that a little bit at Riverdale Heights. So what I do is that gives us time, I make time to co-plan with the teachers, right? After school in the morning, they share a lot of their instructional materials with me. So I know ahead of time what's being taught so I can prepare activities or strategies or things that I am ready to go when I go to the classroom and I'm working with ESL students in that situation. So it combines both content and language objectives as well. And then, do you want to talk a little bit about how the junior high goes, which is kind of more like a pull-out sort of?
Yeah, we do a combination at the junior high. I would say mostly push-in, but we have, this year especially, a few newcomers, emerging students who need extra attention. So while I push into their general academic classes, I spend a lot of time working with teachers, figuring out when I can pull them out during that time and work individually, one-on-one with them. So the good, the good thing about these models is that it's flexible, and it is by student by need.
And then just a little bit about the high school. High school is kind of a different animal. It is held, I have an ESL class eighth hour at the high school. So students who have qualified for ESL services will be assigned to that class period. That class period looks a little bit different, as we know. It's, it's meant for a lot of different things. So part of the day or part of the time of the period, I will work on specific language lessons with them. Part of the time, I support them in their content area classes if they come in and have an assignment or an activity or a paper to write or to reread a chapter in a book, like I did today. They also have eighth hour to go to their other teachers to work, right? So if they come to me with a pass, they can go with that teacher and also work on their assignments as well. And then collaboration, just at the secondary level. So I teach them about how to send emails to their teachers to advocate for themselves because they are without support for most of the day at the high school. So really teaching them the tools that they have, creating tools with them. Like I just created a translation dictionary where they can type in a word in English and it pops up with a picture and like a definition in their native language, and so they can use that on the go. Different things with CoWriter, we've found. They can speak into their Chromebook in Russian, and it will translate into English. They can write and finish their assignments, how to submit Google Docs, things like that. So eighth hour at the high school is kind of like a catch-all a little bit. So we do our best to meet their needs during that time, so.
Speaking a little bit, if you heard both Carolyn and Brittany mention the levels of students, I kind of wanted to illustrate this a little more. A lot of students we've traditionally had in the district, up until I would say the last couple of years, have been at that high-intermediate level. They can carry on a pretty good conversation, often in their home countries. They took plenty of English classes. They may have been in an international school. Where they're missing items are understanding humor, idioms, nuance. Good case in point, a student who was able to speak fluently in the language, but the PE teacher sent them onto the field to play football, and he didn't know what football was. So some of those cultural context pieces, that'd be that high-intermediate level. When we get to the intermediate level, that's where they can hold a conversation to a certain point, and then they're, they're reaching for a word or they're in need of assistance. That emerging or high-need ESL is what the ladies just mentioned that we've started to see more of in the district, where they're coming from their home country for whatever reason, and maybe they have a 500-word vocabulary in English. So everything, from anchoring to what is happening in a classroom, figuring out routines and procedures. Add that with different technology, or maybe no experience with technology. It requires a lot more time to work with an emerging student. And like I said, this year, we have four currently at the high school. We have three or four at the junior high, and we have multiple students with this need in our elementaries as well. Which, for our teachers, the interesting part about an emerging student is that most of them are like sponges. You give them time, over three months, four months. Now that emerging student has moved up to intermediate or high-intermediate. We've actually had students start in our district in emerging, and within a year, they're proficient, based on the student, based on their, perhaps gifts with language, based on their work ethic. There's a whole host of factors that come into play in terms of how quickly or how slowly a person learns academic English. Our LAO Plan, I want to draw this to your attention. If you go to our district website, we do have a resource for both parents and for teachers. Obviously, for our teachers. If all of a sudden in your classroom, you have a student who doesn't speak a whole lot of English, then we scramble our teachers to look at interpreting devices, translation devices, what are strategies you can use to assess students, things of that nature. Our LAO Plan is the document where all of that is kind of outlined. Everything from how a student gets picked up for screening to Everything from how a student gets picked up for screening to what happens within the program to them being exited and monitored is delineated in that. So I would highly suggest and recommend you take a look at it. It's kind of an interesting document, it gives a little bit more than this presentation can as to how we work with our students. So what do we do for assistive tech? As Brittany was mentioning, we have some programs. Imagine Learning is a software program for K through two students, very similar to Waterford, but with a lot more multimedia and interaction. This comes from Title III monies that we get through our AEA. We get these licenses for basically pre-literacy development. We also use this program, let's say we have a fourth or a fifth grader that enters our district that is at the level perhaps of kindergarten English, they can benefit from how this program works. ESL iPads, these have become over the years more and more of a godsend. It is to the point now where there are apps that you can put on that will, you can speak into it in English. It will speak back in a variety of different languages, vice versa. The student can hit the button, speak their native language, it throws it back. We're piloting TimeKettle headsets, kind of the next level of that, where the student wears a headset that's connected to an app on their phone and they're hearing the language in real time as a person is speaking it. Now, as you can imagine, there is no perfect translation interpretation device. So some of it, at times can be humorous or not quite accurate. But it's come a long way from where it was, and at least it gives students a connection and a gist of what's going on. And then our district-supported Chrome extensions and apps. Co-Writer, Snap and Read, Learning Ally, which are some audiobooks. And Say Hi, which is that interpretive app where you set up the languages, you hit the button, speak, and it speaks the language back as well as writing it. So we find, for example, at the lower elementary level, students are not able to perhaps read in their native language, but if they hear it, they can interact, this gives us both. What about connecting with our families? This is something that we are continuing to work on and build more. We do have open houses, we have had cultural nights in our different buildings. We're looking to provide more of those where we get those families from the community that have students who are English-language in our building so that they can interact with each other and with our school and feel comfortable. Parent-teacher conferences is an opportunity for our ESL teachers to work with and meet the parents. The teacher will have a conference, but the ESL teacher can say, hey, here's what I'm noticing in one of those domains of language in terms of growth of the student. We have had and we will probably have more of these families moving into our community where maybe they need furniture, maybe they need help with an apartment, maybe they need a car. We have been very fortunate and blessed in this district that we have some really good people that have jumped to that opportunity. I can think of a night that Mr. Struse and Mr. Zimmer and I actually went to an EL parent's house to help with a light that had fallen and to help just kind of put people at ease. Humble Dwellings is within our community. It's an organization that can actually outfit a house or an apartment with furniture and clothing. We have families that need that, that are coming into our district. Another thing we do are the flags of home countries. If you go to our high school cafeteria, that gets updated every year so that a student can take pride in where they're from in looking at the flag. So exiting and beyond, our program, the goal of our program is for students to exit it. We really want to get students to that proficient level, number one, so that they can feel confident in their academics. And number two, so that they can embrace that multilingualism that they have, including English and including success in our buildings. Students exit using that ALPA test, but in a much longer version that's normed, that's a summative. If they show proficient in that, they are exited and then monitored for three years. By monitoring, it means we're talking to teachers, we're looking at their grades, the progress that they're making. If we notice that there's an issue, that's when we step in to bring a whole host of interventions into play. We can still have them access ESL teachers or we can still use some of that interpretive technology that we've talked about. So looking to the future, if I look at where our program and where our families have come from before. When I first started, many of the students came with larger employers in the community. It was Deere, it was Arconic, it was the Arsenal, it was our hospitals. It was those kind of industries that were bringing families into our district. Now we really have a mix. We still have that, but we're also getting other families that are seeing, hey, this is what we provide as an education for Pleasant Valley. If I find a way to move into the district or open roll my student, I can share in that kind of an education. I wanted to bring up the second bullet point. World Relief is opening an office in Bettendorf within the next two weeks. I was just in a meeting, organizational meeting this past week. They've been operating for the last eighteen years primarily in Illinois. As they're looking at number of refugees that are applying to the programs and what they can do locally, they've decided to branch out and they're starting to create a network here in Scott County. So within two weeks, we've got an office opening in Bettendorf. They are planning to settle forty-five refugee families within Scott County within the next year. And they already have paperwork and have been approved to bring in a hundred and twenty-five for next year. I know our neighboring district Bettendorf has a few of these students. We have actually, we actually have one family that is connected with World Relief from Uzbekistan. I look for there to be more of this to come and we're heaping in tune and working with World Relief to help these families as they come into our district. We have an evolving, as you know, within our district of the kinds of families and who is becoming a Spartan. That great diversity brings challenges with it that our team is willing to address and working hard to do. Again, thank you, and I would like to say thank you over the years for all of the support as this program has grown from about seven or eight kids doing some after-school work to the hundred and thirty that we have today. Any questions from anyone?
I have one question. Do you really give a breakdown of those hundred and thirty kids, like what level they're at? I'm just curious, like how many at the junior high and high school level come in like at that emerging level? Is it more than I think?
This year, yes. In years past, it's been interesting, the ebb and flow. I would say if we look at the history of where those emerging speakers are, the majority of them have hit in our elementaries. Which if you think of an elementary student, if you take a kindergartner who's struggling, put them with other kindergartners in a language-rich environment, provide them language services, they're able to flourish and become proficient in English that much quicker. At the moment, as I mentioned, we have four at the high school that I know of and three, you could call it four at the junior high that are kind of at that level. And as you were probably guessing, for them at that level to become proficient takes that much more work because they have eleven, twelve, thirteen years of catch-up academic language and academics for them to be at peer level. But that, that's part of the interesting ebb and flow of our program. If I were to put up here their schedules and what they look like over the course of the year. On average, I would say what, eighteen to twenty-five different changes in schedules? Because we'll start the year like we do now and then, let's say next week, a family moves in and they have, have a high-need student. Then it's a matter of looking at the schedule, figuring out where do we find that four or five times a week that we need for, for pull-out services to get them acclimated into the building? And as the year goes on, you can back off of that and then perhaps another student comes in or perhaps a group of students. That's where I wanted to show you both the beginning of the year and the end of the year numbers like last year. That's part of the work that this wonderful team does. But yes, we have had an uptick in students who are in that emerging level that need that extra support. That's why we're reaching to the technology, we're looking to creative ways of doing assessment. I just spoke, for example, with a history teacher that said, hey, I'm gonna give them the test. I've got a copy of it here in English, I've got another copy in Spanish. I'm gonna see how much they can answer in Spanish, see what they can do with the questions in English. It gives me a sense of what they know. And that's using interpretive and translation technology that we can do some of that. Again, it's not perfect, but at least it gives us a chance to interact with that student. Yes, sir?
So when you have a student that's enrolled in the program and they're progressing fairly quickly, are they eligible to take that proficiency exam at any time throughout the school year or do you only give it at certain times of the school year?
Per the state, it is only given between February and April and then we get a score back in May. It's offered once. That's, that's a great question, I've had families ask that. If my student is doing everything they can and their language comes on board quicker, they can, they stay in the program for the entire year. That's where adjusting how many times they work with the ESL teacher or what the service is like comes in. We get a student like that, I'll, I'll use a case in point. We had a young man from China five years ago who really is talented and gifted. His language, he came in with hardly anything. By the end of the year, he was scoring higher than a lot of his peers on the MAP test and on the IASPS. He stayed in the program, but we were able to scale back the services to maybe meeting with him once a week or once every couple of weeks. And I'll never forget, he did a wonderful lab report in science, but he didn't know what a cricket was. He knew the scientific term for cricket, but that was a vocab word he didn't. So unfortunately, no, but once a year, there's that opportunity to demonstrate proficiency and then they're exited, so.
And can you maybe give me a, a little window, when somebody passes that proficiency exam? I know there's a variability, but let's say somebody passes with an average even below average score, but they pass. I envision that, that person to be able to speak English just like me or you. Am I incorrect in that thinking or can you give me windows as to how, what qualifies proficiency?
What qualifies proficiency per this test is that you can show in reading, writing, listening, and speaking that you can answer what an average student, let's say in a nine-twelve band, in a six-eight band or a K-five band would be able to do. Is it perfect? No. In fact, if I go back in the history of the program, five years ago, we were using three different measures. We had to look at the state test, we also had to look at how they performed on the state test that all students take in reading and in math. They've kind of taken that away, part of that is a civil rights question. So sometimes we'll get false positives where they'll show up proficient on these tests, but there are still items that they need assistance with. That's where, when a student's in the monitoring process, let's say they're at the secondary level, they are not automatically put into that class for ESL. But we talk to the families, we talk to the student to say, hey, if you're writing your research paper as a junior and you need a little assistance, you can still go and work with the ESL teacher. So we don't just cut those people off. And it is really tricky, I don't know how you can say in one test, now you're proficient in English and now you can operate like a... And what are we talking about? A ninth-grade student, a ninth-grade student at Pleasant Valley? There's a lot of factors at play there, very good question.
When it comes to translation and helping parents understand what's going on in our district, what supports do we have? I imagine you do your best to maybe find someone and then use the app as a secondary process in those meetings?
We have another item that I didn't put in here that's open to all families, not just EL families. If we know, for example, that families, let's say they speak Arabic. I don't speak Arabic, we don't have any Arabic speakers in the, in the district, but we have contracted with a company called Argo that we, we get on a conference call or we invite them to Zoom. In the conference call, we pick up a phone and within five minutes, we have a representative from the company that will interpret in Arabic. So then we can sit down and have that kind of conversation with the family. For Spanish and French, I've done that myself, I'm fluent in those languages and I quite regularly use the Spanish, I would say maybe more than the French. But depending on what countries our people are from, that's been a useful tool too, to... Because that's, that's huge, connecting the parent with their student's educational experience is what we're all about. What we're finding, in fact, Mr. Struse and I were just talking about this today. We have kind of basically three kinds of families in our district. We have families who are completely fluent in English. We have families that aren't and we know it and we see it. Where we're really struggling now are families that understand a majority, but maybe miss the details and we want them to have those details. So how do we intertwine the interpreting? That's where we're thinking, the headphones, the interpreter from Argo are ways that we can connect them with their students' education.
And then as far as sharing this information, I know you have the meetings with teachers. Do they qualify for a 504? Are they, is this program under a 504 plan or is this just a separate?
Great question. So this program is basically like a student having a 504. If you qualify as an English learner in our district, that comes with accommodations that are honored very similar to how accommodations are for 504s. So students needing extra time for tests, maybe a, a smaller environment. We have a student now that needs to talk through the test and do some oral testing because she's struggling with the written component of language. All of that per the law and per our teachers, our teachers are given copies of that. They work with our ESL staff and students have in our guarantee those accommodations. Even students whose parents choose to waive the services have rights and our teachers are to provide those accommodations for them. So if we have a family that says, you know, the pull-out, I'm worried about my child missing what's happening in classroom instruction. I don't want them to do that. We say, okay, maybe the teacher can push in to provide assistance there. If they don't want that, we still draft accommodations and give to the teachers so that those students have a right to the extra time or to the help that they need.
I just have one more question. As far as, I know elementary schools, I imagine the upper levels do too, but I know if there's a new student in the district, they get partnered with another student and they kind of help some around the school. Does that similar partnership happen for children that come to the district that are at these different levels of understanding English?
Yes, in fact, it's interesting. Sometimes we will use students who themselves had been in the program a few years, few years earlier because they kind of understand the process, we'll partner them with the student. Sometimes it really depends on the student and then the building. For example, at the high school, we have an ambassador program, a student that can basically walk them through their schedules. And I sit down with the counselors and we try to find who would be a good fit. And often we do look for either somebody who has a multilingual background or a student maybe that speaks that common language. So if there are detailed questions that need answered, they've got a friend that they can connect with or someone who is sensitive to all of that and is good working with people that speak multiple languages. Great question.
One other question. So looking at the current rate of enrollment in the program, which has continued to expand pretty significantly, at what point will your current staff be short and needing to possibly expand it?
That's where I, I, last year, we had a meeting and this is a meeting where Mrs. Kenyon, Mr. Hyatt and at the time, Mr. Zimmer and myself met. We were looking at the projections based on the rate of growth that we have, moving from that one-twenty-nine to that one-sixty, sixty as quick as we, as quickly as we did. By the grace of the board and discussions with our administrative team, we added a position this year in district. What we found last year, for example, Hopewell was kind of the runaway train. We went from thirty-five, thirty-seven students at the start of the year to about fifty-five by the end of the year. Fifty-five students on a caseload for one teacher trying to provide all of those services wasn't enough. I, I've talked to Mr. Struse, we have a couple of multilingual aides, paraprofessionals that we've brought in. Both of them multilingual, one of them having been an ESL student herself. And we found some that matched some of the language need that we had as a way to help those students. But cognizant of those numbers and the growth of the program, we're always looking at what are the projections? Is our staffing appropriate? And I think this year, I think we've got good numbers at the moment. I'll say Carolyn, for example, is split between teaching four sections of English Language Arts and then the rest of her day is ESL. That's because the need grows, grew so rapidly at the junior high, we had students at Cody. This year, we don't have any students at Cody, we have one at Bridgeview, but we have all of these emerging students now that are at the junior high. So her time gets shuffled and divided accordingly. That's probably the golden question we keep wrestling with is what is the right mix of faculty per student need? It's kind of been a crystal ball and it's been multiple discussions I've had with Brian and with our team in terms of, okay, as we're moving into next year, where are we, where are we projecting to go?
And I guess that one of the things that's kind of difficult is at the start of the year, you have a certain amount. By the end of the year, you have an increased amount and you have no way of predicting. So at some point, do you, do you hire somebody mid-year or do you just, are you... do you, do you hire somebody mid-year or do you just, are you not able to say no to these people, correct?
No, I mean, if they're coming into our district, we do provide them the services. Um, one year, if I think back a couple of years, we ended up hiring somebody mid-year. We were fortunate enough to have somebody who was certified that could come in and do that. Um, we're always cognizant of that. I mean, if ultimately, let's say we get to November and with the new housing going up, we get thirty more. We have some flexibility in the schedules of our teachers right now to provide that, but at a certain point, there's a tipping point for everything. So that's where we're going and being creative with aides if we can find them to assist until we can hire another teacher should we need it. The weird ebb and flow of this is we're at one sixty now. What if we drop back to a hundred and twenty? Then in terms of staffing, how do we get and maintain the right mix without overloading and overwhelming our teachers and providing the proper services to students? So, great question.
Any other questions from the board? Well, thank you very much. It was a really, really good presentation on this and it really gave us a, a nice um uh overview over how our English um language learners are being supported. And I appreciate all the dedication that you all have for these students. And it must be pretty gratifying to see them come from moving up that sort of um
Yes.
hierarchy there of their English proficiency.
We have a great team and I'd like to, you know, I like to think, for example, I'm seeing now from when I started as an ESL teacher in the program, those students are graduating from high school or reaching the end of their time with us and where they were when they arrived to where they are now is phenomenal. And again, I'd like to thank this board for supporting the work that our teachers have done and we have, we have a phenomenal rock star team of professionals working with our students.
We have a special ingredient for that sponge that children have on grasping new languages. Please let me know because I love languages.
I just want to say thanks to Jamie. He's literally thirteen years ago is when we started this program from scratch and trying to help it grow. Brittany has been with us the longest, I think now of our team. But um you talk about flexibility, when we have that growth, they will sit down and they'll say, hey, if you take this student, I can help these other three students, you know, so they truly are flexible in what they do and they know that going in and they just, we appreciate that mindset that they have and they've done a great job and it is a cool, too bad the other teachers weren't here, but their personalities are perfect for our kids. We just need patience and they bring that to the table just. For both, so thank you to them.
Can I, yes, can I sneak a question?
Sure.
So have you benchmarked with the similar districts, maybe Des Moines or Iowa City that maybe have a program we might learn a thing or two from?
We are constantly looking at what is happening across the state. And I, and I would say not just in Iowa, but we're also looking across the river. Across the river in Illinois, for example, they, they have within their law that thirty students, thirty ESL students necessitates a teacher. In districts in Iowa, we're staffed better than a lot of our counterparts in the state in terms of the teacher to student ratio, but we're looking, Des Moines, for example, I'll, I'll take Cedar Rapids and Iowa City that also have some similar populations to what we do. We meet as a, I meet with an AEA consortium once each month and that's part of that discussion of, hey, how are you doing things? How are things being done here? I know Bernie, for example, the professional at uh North Scott that works with ESL students. We've been here, here hurrier on how to use the data and how to work the standards into the standards that our classroom teachers are using there. So yes, that's, that's constantly something we're looking at. And I'm happy to say that by the numbers, we're in better shape than a lot of other districts in the state are in terms of our staffing and our attention to student need.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Excellent job. Thank you guys.
Okay, moving on to another order of new business. It's a summer school report. Mr. Hyatt?
Yeah. So we held summer school, which we have done in recent past minus the pandemic year. And I wanted to start by highlighting um that, that our, our attendance was down a little bit and we do uh believe that's for one primary reason, that's the number of kids that uh are meeting the criteria, which isn't, we look at the pass scores at the elementary levels. And so that's a good sign that that number is down. That means that uh we're meeting those learners where they are and, and growing them over the course of the year and getting them to proficiency and beyond, which is exactly what we hope to do. The other piece of that is, um, you know, it depends a little bit on uh parental consent for, for that support and we do have um several families that find um resources that they access over the summer, uh that might look a little bit different for their kiddos. And so, you know, this, this number, um, the enrollment number is always dependent upon that. It's not a mandatory enrollment and it's not compulsory like a regular school year. And so just highlighting those two things. I want to commend our staff, particularly this year. We did some creative thinking and research um starting last summer. As we reflected on last summer school's experience, uh, we looked at a, a lot of districts coming out of the pandemic had responded by buying canned curriculum. Um, and when you look at uh whether it's working or not, a lot of those districts, especially some of the mega districts across the country, they were throwing it away. Um, so they spent astronomical figures to buy candor curriculum and it wasn't working. And so, and I think that's indicative of our uh philosophy and practice with curriculum in English Language Arts, not only during summer school, but during the school year. So as we visited that, our teachers were very dedicated, um, very open to um studying that a bit and looking at ways that we could make our summer school curriculum more engaging, more interactive, more fun um for our students in those days. We also looked at attendance numbers and we tried something new with attendance. We lessened the number of days because the attendance rates were low. So I want to draw your attention down to the twenty twenty-three attendance box. Heather, if you could scroll down there and look in the upper left-hand corner. We had a very nice jump of twenty-three percent of our students that missed one day or less of school. We believe that was due to, and this, this was true of our staff attendance as well. Um, we lessened from thirteen days to ten, which caused just one weekend to be smashed in the middle of five days of attendance over two weeks, which in a, I mean, part of that was looking at our, our uh demographics and practice and if the kids aren't there, they're not learning. And so uh we lessened the number of days and we believe that was a good move um in reflection of that because the attendance rates were up. We don't yet have the, if, if I draw your attention to the far, the bottom right box, we don't yet have fall MAP administration. That window just opened uh this week and so we won't have that data for grades three through six to compare to previous years to see of the impact that had, and that's just a data point. Um, but that, that'll be interesting to follow up on too. Um, the reality is that when you look at research, uh, the purpose of summer school is not to grow kids. It's to sustain them, to maintain where, where they were. Research shows, if you look at John Hattie's research, that's probably the most popular in the world of education. It's a meta-analysis of eight hundred meta-analysis and it shows that uh there's about three things that can happen in schools that will have an adverse effect on a student's achievement and summer school is one of them. And that's why we came back to making the learning engaging, interactive, fun. Because if you just sit there and, and throw rote memorization low level fruit at those kids in summer school, they're going to disengage. They're not going to like school. Um, they're not going to maintain even. They're going to slide. That's what the research says. And so those were a big part of the why behind those changes. We're looking forward to seeing those map results to see, um, you know, are they similar or not? There's other data in here, but there's a couple of other things that I wanted to highlight. Um, just again, I wanted to commend our staff. Our staff attendance was excellent. And we actually, for the first time in several years, had, had a waiting list for staff members that wanted to teach summer school. Um, and I, I think that speaks volumes about the changes that were made and, and driven by our teachers. Um, we sat down collectively and talked about all these things, but I think it also shows that level of commitment that our staff has to kiddos too. So our, our curriculum did focus most heavily on reading and writing. Um, we even took a little more focus on writing. In the spirit of that decision was one of writing is the productive side of reading. And so if we really want to grow in literacy, that we should have students getting some instruction and experience in writing and producing their own authentic work. And so um another change that we did make was we had progress reports that were being given. And again, the purpose of summer school, we don't expect to see growth like we would over the year of a full calendar school year. Um, so it was really, we felt it would be more helpful um to get a current, fresh, if you will, uh writing exemplar from the students that they did as a part of that uh ten-day unit that they did. So what, what we ended up doing for uh showing the progress was we took and they had an exemplar at the end of that writing at each of the grade levels. And then we made copies and, and the original went home, a copy was there for the summer school teacher. And then we made copies to give to their teachers um once they were incoming so that um teachers this school year could see their freshest example of what they were capable of doing connected with that unit. So that would, that was a, something that uh received very positive teacher feedback. It felt more purposeful and less tedious because teachers were just finding that they were just sharing a recap of what they did in summer school as opposed to truly showing what kids did and, and how what they can do coming into the school year. Uh, the last piece that I would say is we did maintain after studying this, again, focusing on fun and engagement, getting those kiddos in the building, smiling and, and having a good time. Uh, we maintained the specials concept at the elementary level. So we had uh the traditionals, if you will, um PE and music. Uh, we did not have art. We went with robotics again this year. And so Mr. Barber, who's our robotics team, he's been awesome and, and done that over the years and it's been, uh, the students have spoken highly of that part of their experience. And again, our, our specials folks with PE, science and music. We have a partnership with, with science, I should uh point out with the Iowa State Extension Office. And so they bring um students from the university to come and do units with our students during those two weeks. That's, that's what the science special looks like. So in summary, that's it. We, we believe it was a successful go this year. Overall, looking forward to seeing uh what the outcomes are in the way of the students, but in a nutshell.
Just want to make sure of the timeframe. We did it for ten days, but it was different in July this year. You've mentioned the two weeks we did because of the family break.
Oh, yes. I, one of the, one of the um kind of challenges that we have is with, with Family Week at the end of July now, it, and it, when you look at where July fourth falls, it gets, that's another reason that we looked at, well, you know, now we're gonna, we're gonna be losing many of those families around if we go around July fourth. They're not going to come back from a vacation or whatever. And so that was another reason that we crunched um those ten days in there.
So um you went from thirteen days to ten days. Did you change the length of the day or just changed the curriculum enough to give it all into ten days and?
Yes. Yep, we did not lengthen the day. If we lengthen the day, uh, if we lengthen the day, we need to start looking at other um expenses and logistics with um lunch being served. So we kept it to the half-day model for that reason.
So is it morning?
Yeah, it's mornings. I'm sorry. Yep. Eight to eleven thirty. And the other thing, I, I didn't talk about the junior high. They maintained their model too, and we were both in, in the Hopewell location this year, again, just like last year due to the construction at um the junior high. And something new that they tried uh was they did um kind of compartmentalize the math and the reading a little bit differently because you're talking about middle school, junior high age kids. And so they did have some kids who just came to one or the other, not to both. So that was something that they did a little bit different this year.
And the transportation was taken was, was basically responsible from the parents?
So our transportation works uh where we have, we have a hub out of each of the homeschools. So Hopewell being home base for summer school did not have a bus route, but the other five buildings did. There was a bus that would show up to the building. Um, we just do that out of a convenience. Um, because we want kids to be there. So, you know, if we, if we had students who, it was a little bit of a jaunt. Um, they could go to their homeschool and the bus would pick them up and bring them to Hopewell and back.
I don't know if you know the answer to this, but of all the kids that you identified for summer school, how many participated versus declined? Like what percentage declined summer school that you wished would have been there?
You know, that's a, that's a, a good question. I mean, I can give you the, I could look up and get to you the, the percentage of that were offered and declined. We do usually have a handful that want summer school and we tell them that's not the purpose because their children don't need it. This is needs-based and so but we, we also have some students who just missed this benchmark. So I fast is one point, but also we do look at teacher recommendation for those bubble kids. If we have children that are just below the threshold and they're strong in other areas, we might be having a conversation where we talk about those other resources. It depends on the family situation. And then if we have kids, we might have a child just above the threshold who's really struggling with comprehension things and we decide, no, this would be a good experience for them and uh their parents are, are favorable.
Any questions? If not, then I will take a motion regarding the summer school report.
I move the board accept the twenty twenty-three summer school report as presented.
Welcome, Ms. Puncle, second, Ms. Brockman. That's a board accept the twenty twenty-three summer school report as presented. Roll call, vote please in the statement.
Mrs. Brockman?
Yes.
Mrs. Pascun?
Yes.
Mr. Kenwisher?
Yes.
Mrs. Kumpf?
Yes.
Dr. Wogle?
Yes. And um our final new business topic today is board policy review. Mr. Struse?
Yeah, so today we'll go through about thirteen different policies. Um, and this will be just the first review. So if there current policies that we have at this time, we'll review and read through them tonight. Um, you have the week, there are two weeks to look at them and then come back and we'll look at those next week again for the second review and then at that time approve these changes. If you see that, if it's a brand new one, we always have it for three readings. So we bring it back for another one after that. And then also next board meeting, we'll have some additional new policies that we'll bring. So this is kind of the start of some of them. The ones that we'll start with right now would be the seven hundred series, which is our, we had some food service changes and this is to meet state and federal guidelines and just some verbiage changes that IASB is recommending as well. So the, some of these are not, they're just small changes, but we're making that. So the first one there, you can see we went from calling it the lunch to the food service program, which is what they do with IASB and across the country. And you'll note that the breakfast program is now called a school breakfast program. So Corey Gamble, our uh director of food service, just made that change and that one there. The next one is a civil rights um procedure. This is a new one that we had not had in our policies and IASB is recommending this one. So what you see here is a brand new policy that um is all red because it's brand new, but just really kind of walks through a civil rights process. Should something occur in the food service program and the steps you would take. Um, so you can see that one there. And then the next one should be seven oh one point one E one. Find that one there. Try the next one down. Yep, there it is. So on this one here, this is not all in red. This has not been in our board policy before, but if you went to our website, what you would see under food service, there is, this is the federal guidelines for nondiscrimination and the Iowa nondiscrimination policy. Both of those live on our website. But we're going to place them in our board policy. So again, not new, but just putting that there. The next one that you'll be able to read through goes back to the civil rights complaint form. Um, instead of putting this all in red, again, this is just one that you, this would be a new one that we do not have in our board policy at this time. So it correlates to the seven oh one R one that you saw previously. It's just the form that we would use. This would be a fillable form that eventually we'd have in our website that if something came up, you could just type right into this and submit there. The next one, very small changes, again, the one just changing to food service. This is seven oh one point two. IASB had recommended the following legal references. So we've added the legal references there, but everything above IASB had recommended the following legal references, so we've added the legal references there, but everything above in terms of the policy. Is the same as to what we had previously. So no changes in the, in the verbiage there. The next one, seven oh one point three, the top section is what we've had for financial support. This bottom one was, I was excited to see from IASB because it kind of meets a need that we have. This basically says that you now set up a private or a fund in your district flexible account. From private sources that could be used to help support students. You might say, why, what does that look like? Every year, we'll always have a couple of families who will call us and then will say, I'd like to donate money to school. To help offset this, uh, support of a student who might have a negative balance. You might see it during the holiday times. Well, we really never really had an account set up of how do you make that happen? Um, so this is a new policy that allows you to set up that flexible account and you can draw from that. Should that be a parent's wish or whoever might be donating the money to help offset some costs of a student.
There is a typo on there, uh, lessons, it should be funds, F U N D S.
Correct. Yep. Sell that as well. Um, the next one, eligible for free and reduced meals, seven oh one point four. Again, this is really a policy that we've had. IASB is, it reads a little more fluently. And it just works through the process and notification of how our program works. Should someone be looking to inquire about free and reduced, how Cory reaches out to families twice a year. Um, with the paperwork that's needed. Um, and then if you have a negative balance, Cory's reaching out to our families to talk to them about. Um, if free and reduced is needed, if they'd like to apply for that. So. Again, a lot of red, but not very different from our current policy that we have to date. So those are the policies in the seven hundred series that you want to take the next two weeks to look at, compare to what we have. If you have any questions. Again, we'll, we'll take those up.
I don't mean to interrupt. Doug is trying to get back into the meeting. Sorry, so.
I see him here.
He had just, he had told Heather he was trying to get back. Doug, sorry. I just knew this was important for you to hear.
So why don't I take a pause if there's any questions in the seven hundred series before you read them here the next two weeks? Um, any questions you have there?
Any questions?
Uh, so I do have a question. How do you want to receive a feedback on these? Do you want them like written notes or would you like an editorial format?
You can do um, either way, or if you wanted to email Debbie any questions you have. Um, you can bring those up the next board meeting. That works as well. Or if you see it, if you uh, suggest a change in verbiage. You can let her know and we can discuss it at the next meeting too.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome. Okay, the next series are starting with one hundred and four. So this one has to do with some new legislation that's come out here this, from the last session. Uh, the first red paragraph that you see there, there's a new line that reads, within twenty-four hours of receiving a report. The student that may have been the victim of conduct that constitute bullying and or harassment, the district will notify the parent or guardian of the student within that twenty-four hours. So that is a new verbiage that came from this last legislation. And that is the same thing with the next one also. Um, should you, after going through the process, you will read there, probably the main part would be. Um, lines, I'll go to line three when you read that one. The student may enroll in another attendance center within the district that offers classes at the student's grade level. Subjects to requirements and limitations established in the Iowa law. So what that would be designed, for example, in our district. You could have a student go from one elementary school to another elementary school. We only have one junior high, only have one high school. Um, so that does not work there, but some districts have more than one high school, so you could change from one to the other. That's a new law that came out this year. Otherwise, the policy reads the same as we have had previously. Similarly, one oh four, one oh four R. So a couple of things here that go through. Number one, the black part is what we've had previously and you'll see at the end of this, you don't have to scroll all the way down Heather, this time, you can just leave it where it's at. But when you get to the bottom, you will see our current policy that we have with a lot of strike-throughs. The red section is new for two reasons. Number one, it talks about student or employee filing situation. So that would, employee being new in this one here. Um, but then again, as you go through the process, just explains it. Um, in kind of a, it's a little bit longer explanation because it's more paragraphs compared to what we had previously. But I think as you read this, it gives a nice explanation of what the complaint, the investigation and the decision would look like. Um, in all of these measures here. So really, when you look at this one, the next two weeks, go through this. Look at what we currently had, you should see that most of what we had before is still in this one. Just explain maybe a little bit further from what IASB is recommending. The next one.
If they come, if a bullying report comes through the website on the anonymous uh, link, I guess it is.
Yes.
Then um, it says within twenty-four hours, a family has to be notified, but if it's anonymous. Or what happens there?
So depending upon if it's anonymous, then how it's coming to us in terms of what information they've put in there, in terms of who it would be. But you can start the investigation to see who the student that's identified as the victim and who is the harasser. And that would be the way to go through in twenty-four hours. If you would reach out to that family and say, hey, if. Information has come forward, we're gonna talk to your child about being, being harassed because they're the victim of it. That'd be the way to go through in that process. To see if they can fill in information if it's anonymous. So four twenty-one, um, this one here, again, we have a policy called professional development. They've added licensed employee in front of this. And this paragraph in red is also new verbiage based upon new law. Basically, what it states is when you do professional development, um, that you state the section of the law or the rules. As to why you're having that professional development um, being provided to staff. So you would start with, here's the standard, here's the objective of this professional development and here's the code or the standard that's assigned to it. So that'll be something that we will communicate as we do that. Otherwise, everything else reads exactly the same, just new based upon new legislation. The next one, four twenty-two is a completely new board policy, very short policy. But it just talks about required professional development for employees. So what's different from the previous one was licensed employees. This is for just employees in general. Could be a pair of professionals, whomever that may be. Um, could be your food service. But again, as you read that second paragraph, that second line again, talks about noticing a section of the law. Or the rules adopted by the state, that you would list those when you do the training for employees also. So similar to the one previously, just license versus employee. The next one, five oh four point oh nine, again, just a few changes with child abuse reporting. Again, our policy is what you see in black. The one thing that they changed was explicitly they gave an age. So it basically says in that second and third line, all licensed school employees, teachers, coaches and parent educators. And all school employees eighteen years of age or older. So the eighteen years of age is new. That they must now complete the mandatory reporting program that we have a website or the. A link that they go through from a training standpoint. The next one, in the next paragraph, there's a small change. You'll see what's crossed off. It is the oral report is reported in twenty-four hours and the written report is in forty-eight hours. So just changing that to show that the oral and the, the written are slightly different.
There's a typo there too.
Yes, should be of, an oral report of the suspected child abuse. Thank you. And the last one that we're reviewing here this next two weeks. This is the school calendar and school day. Everything else reads exactly the same. This next one here, this is one that we got to figure out, but we put the line in here, passed on legislation was. Each year, the minimum school calendar may include up to five days or thirty hours of instruction delivered primarily over the internet. The genesis of, behind that is weather related. Very difficult to say. It's midnight, snow comes in and the next morning you're gonna say, we're having a. Home online during learning day. You know, what did kids take home the night before? What did teachers prepare? This gets a little tricky. We've talked about maybe it's a situation when, when we had, it was called the polar vortex a number of years ago. And it was just cold day after day after day, or we had a lot of snow. Maybe when we hit some of those and remember we had to figure out how you make up days, we're extending so long into the summer. Maybe that is when something like this comes into play, but districts are having a hard time trying to imagine how you. Efficiently utilize that day, PK through twelve. So we will continue to think through this, but we put it in the board policy, knowing that it's there. If we can use it, we'll use it to the best of our ability.
I guess I was under the impression that that wasn't allowed as a school day.
That's what we had thought.
Change?
It did. In this last legislative session, that was changed, that before you could not, we were given that option. Oh boy, when was that? We had that one year where we could do it. And then they took it away, we couldn't do it, and they brought it back now this last year. It's, it's difficult to manage. It really truly is. Just, it's easier at certain grade levels. Not easy across the board. Unless you set up, it's just some activities we're gonna do on a day. So again, those are the board policies we're looking at here the next two weeks. Again, if you have questions, you can email me directly or. Um, bring them back the next time. That'd be fine.
Can I say something?
Yes.
Okay, so I would just really, really encourage.
Why don't you, can you come up to the?
Yeah.
So that everybody can hear you.
Yeah, so obviously, no, I probably felt, I read through.
Can you just say your name so that?
Yeah, it's Kelly Smith and I'm a parent in the district. Um, I just really, really um, would love you guys to read through the anti-bullying and harassment policies and also the investigation policies. Because I, um, these are my notes from them as I'm looking through them with questions of what we dealt with. Um, with our daughter and I still um, think that some of these can be written better. For example, retaliation prohibited, which I one hundred percent agree with. But if you look at that first um, sentence, individuals who knowingly file harass. Or bullying and harassment or complaints against any person who gives false statements in an investigation may be subject to disciplining, discipline by appropriate measures. That's true. But then I ask you, what does that sound like? It sounds a lot like we blame the person who's filing the complaint, which happened to my daughter. So I would suggest not removing that, but I would suggest adding something in there for retaliation against the victim. Or the person who filed the complaint. I also, um. Um, sorry, I literally have this. Um, I, I'm not toler, so previously it says, um, the policy is not. Land and harassment is against all the laws and it's not tolerated by the board. I want to ask you guys, what does that mean that it's not tolerated? And I really want you to just sit and think about that. Because if, the board is not willing to get involved in student matters, which I understand you're a governing board. But when there's a problem and somebody comes to you guys crying out, we're asking you to get involved. Especially when we've gone to the highest level and couldn't get answers there or help at that level. Then you guys have to be willing to be involved in those things. Because there's another section in here for um, an alternate. An alternate investigator will be designated in the event that claimant is a superintendent or superintendent's designee. Who's gonna do that? You guys are the superintendent's boss. So is one of you on the board gonna be investigating that claim or who is? Um, I also, I know that my time is limited, so I'm just gonna, um. The, the superintendent, superintendent's designee. Who's the superintendent's designee? I mean, because if we are filing a complaint um, on, on the computer. Who, and, and now the director of secondary and primary education are going to be our investigators. Number one, we need to make sure they're trained. Because in my FOIA request, as you all, you guys all know. There has been no training in this district for how to investigate those complaints. And that's not right. It, it's offered to you. And probably very cheap or very free. I haven't looked into the cost of it. But we need to make sure that those people are appropriately trained. And then also the designee, like if, if we have the people who are already investigating it, why are they not getting the complaints? Because you could very easily miss a step in there. If, if the superintendent gets super busy and doesn't get that information over to the investigators. Or make, at least make sure that when the people are filling out the forms, that it's going directly to the investigators. So a step in there doesn't get missed. I don't want what happened to my daughter, happened to another kid in this district. And if you, anybody wants to reach out to me, I do have some more thoughts on this that I'm more than happy to share. Thank you.
Are there, any other questions? We'll, we'll, we'll bring this up again at the next board meeting after we um, you know, examine all of them. There'll be uh, no motion on that right now. Uh, and so that is really it for uh, the new business. Our next meeting is uh, Monday, September twenty-fifth at six PM. And then we have one on Monday, October ninth, as well, at six PM. And then remember the IASB convention is Thursday, November sixteenth. Uh, and that, uh, and, and then our delegate for the, um, delegate assembly is going to be uh, Mr. Kenwisher again. Which is gonna be on Wednesday. So is there, is there anything else for the, go to the.